Good evening, everybody. We will get started. We'll start off with some procedural work. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public law, 1975, Chapter 231. Said notice was published in the Home News Tribune on January 9th, 2025, posted in Borough Hall and sent to the Star Ledger for information. All requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act were satisfied. With that, I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance, flag, United States of America, to the Republic, which stands for nation. And for being a community board filled with people from the community, it's important to note that today is September 11th. Thinking of all, everyone who was lost, all of their families and everything that's transpired for then, since then. So we ask just to have a moment of silence in respect. Thank you. Ten years on the board, I've never had a meeting on September 11th. We start tonight with resolutions, former business. Oh, roll call. Thank you, Byron. Moving too quick.
Ms. Delgado?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Rabenowitz?
Ms. Sealsky?
Here.
Mr. Sondergaard?
Here.
Mr. Tobin?
Here.
Mr. Topping?
Here.
Mr. Sukan? Ms. Patel? Mr. Derrer?
Here.
Mr. Malvone?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on. Thank you, Byron. Items, resolutions from last month. First item is 231362, resolution for 532 Middlesex Avenue. Or motion to approve that resolution.
Ms. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Sealsky?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Tobin?
Yes.
Mr. Topping?
Yes.
Thank you.
The second resolution to be taking action on is 241395. It's 99 Middlesex Avenue, Sandu Realty LLC. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
A motion.
Second.
Ms. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Sealsky?
Yes.
Mr. Tobin?
Yes.
Mr. Topping?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. That closes the resolutions, previous business. We move on to new business tonight. So we ask the applicant is item 251419E, Manuel Hoak. Did I say that correct? Okay. Like to try to do my best. Applicant proposes a first and second floor addition, which will require bulk variances as well as minimum distance of driveway, corner and fencing materials. This application is at 29 Miller Drive. So, welcome. Speak into the microphone.
I have also a copy of the presentation, just in case you want to see it as well.
What is the copy of?
Oh, my statement.
Oh.
Oh, no, you can.
Weird.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm gonna swear you in, okay?
Yeah.
So please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
All truth.
Okay. That's a yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Just state your name and spell it for us.
All right. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Just, I know we have it on the application, but just for the record, just state your name and spell your name for us.
Okay. Yeah, I'm Manuel Hoak.
Okay.
I live in 29 Miller Drive with my wife and my kids. Yeah. Thanks. Okay. So yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman and the board members. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of the board. So my name is Manuel Hoak, my wife and my two kids. We live in 29 Miller Drive. We have been living there for more than 12 years. And we take the pride to live in this very good neighborhood and in this great town. So we are here to respectfully request the relief from certain C variances for our proposed home improvement. And specifically, we want an addition on our living and kitchen area. And also, we want an extension of one of the bedroom and our kitchen. The primary reason for this relief is the hardship of the limitation of the space in our home with our four family members living in the same space. Additionally, these days, I work for Rutgers University. My wife works for Edison Board of Education. So because of the nature of our job and also because my kids, one are also software engineer, another one also a college student. So we need a sufficient space to work at home and also to study. Because our home currently don't have enough space. So that's why we are requesting this addition and the extension of the house. We are aware that our house currently has some existing variances, which is because of the location of the lot, which is in the corner. And also because the way the house was originally positioned there. So we already have some existing variances. We are aware of that. So in our proposal, we thought very carefully so that we we actually so that we need minimum variances without impacting anything in the neighborhood. So for example, here we are requesting an addition on our existing living and the kitchen area with maintaining all the heights and without impacting anything. And although we are requesting an addition, an extension of the kitchen, but we are not requesting the extension of the whole living kitchen and the dining area. We are only requesting the kitchen area extension, just to give the minimum improvement of the kitchen. Similarly, we are requesting an addition, an extension of one of the bedroom. So we are only requesting the extension of the upstairs of the bedroom. So the downstairs will be still open, so without affecting the open spaces in our backyard, back and side yard. We also take neighborhood impact seriously. We live in a very great community and a very good neighborhood. So we do not want to impact anybody's, in any way. So I personally spoke with my nearest neighbors about our proposed, about our proposal of the addition and the extension. And they are, they don't have any objections and they're very happy about the work. And they also actually want to see our work. So maybe in future, they will also get some idea in order to improve their own houses as well. So as we all know, Methuselah is one of the very old town. Many houses in this township were built in the 1950s and 60s. Many of them already need some renovations. We are seeing that many houses actually are doing the renovations and revitalizations. So keeping that in mind, we want to renovate our house in a way so it actually may enhance the character and the quality of the overall neighborhood. So importantly, this neighborhood, this improvement is not a luxury. This is our essential need for my family, so that we can live comfortably and also we can maintain our family and professional life smoothly. So our, as I mentioned earlier, we want some extension of our kitchen and one of the bedroom, which are currently very small. In any case, we tried, we cannot renovate or make any improvement without making some extension. That's why we are proposing some extension of one of the bedroom and one of the kitchen. So in summary, I respectfully ask for the board's favorable considerations. We believe the proposed addition are reasonable, necessary, and in keeping with the spirit of the zoning board. Without negatively impacting our neighbors and the community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone on the board have any questions of the applicant and his testimony?
I do. So Chris, it looks like you flagged that there are additional variances for the foundation plannings in the front.
Yeah, I think I'll let the architect run through the plans. And then I assume you're gonna run through my comments briefly. Okay.
Okay, cool. I'll hold for that then.
Okay. I guess I have one question since the applicant noted hardship. Your memo references, you know, clearly this is a challenging site. If this was on a conforming site, would there be any variances needed?
Conforming lot size?
Yes.
It's hard to tell because of the, it's really based on the setbacks, not the size. I mean, size is given and it can't occupy or subdivide other properties, so there'll be non-conforming as well.
Yeah.
It's more about the orientation of the home.
Yes.
Which triggers several setback variances in the current condition.
Yeah. I guess, yeah, it's somewhat of a hypothetical thing. Because if it was justified with normal rear side, if it was a conforming lot, they're really not asking for much footprint.
Correct. And one of my talking points, comments on, I think 7.1 was for the architect to prepare and exhibit the color codes. The triangular areas that trigger the setback variances. Like when you hear, for example, 6.5 feet, it's not 6.5 feet over the cross of 30 feet of house.
Right.
It's at corners.
Right.
So I'll let the architect run through the plans so we can visualize it and we can go through the report.
So no one else on the board has any questions for the, okay. So I guess. Swear. So I'm gonna swear you in?
Yes.
All right. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Please state your name, spell your last.
My name is Roberto A. Hernandez.
And we need the microphone.
Good evening, zoning board chairman, zoning board secretary, if present, members of the zoning board of adjustment of the borough of Methuselah, zoning board engineer, and all public present. My name is Roberto, Roberto A. Hernandez, and I am the principal architect at Robert A. Hernandez Architect LLC. I have about 24 years of experience. I think 12 working for Thomas Beo Architect and Beo and Marcel Architects, and about 12 years on my own. My office is right here in Methuselah on Amboy Avenue. And I have appeared before multiple boards.
Yes. You are accepted as a witness.
Thank you. So I'm going to jump right into sort of describing the conditions in the lot. So it is an undersized property where the minimum lot size required is 7,500 square feet in the R2 zone. Currently, the property is only 5,906 square feet. So we're, lot is undersized by like 21.26%, which is really hurting us on top of the fact that, you know, the property is a corner property. And my experience tells me that every time I deal with corner properties, either the property is large or small. You never have the perfect scenario. So in this case, we have a house that was, I guess, placed at an angle rather than maybe turned more parallel to Turner Court. If you look at my slide there, the green areas represent existing and proposed areas of the house where we actually encroach. For example, on Turner Court, that green triangle represents basically the existing encroachment of, the current encroachment of the existing house with respect to the front yard setback. If you look at the adjacent triangle, that would be the rear yards, the rear yard setback, where the requirement is 25 feet. I think you can see how I highlighted or dotted the area, the buildable area. So the building should have fit on that buildable area, but obviously it doesn't. And there's, all those green triangular sections are parts of the current house, which, where some of these corners encroach into the side yard, front yard, rear yard. For the expansion of the existing master bedroom and the expansion of the existing sleeping level bathroom, I, we could only go towards the back because that's the location of the master suite. So in expanding the, in expanding the master bedroom towards the back of the property, towards the rear of the property, you would see that other green highlighted area, which shows the encroachment basically where we're not meeting the minimum 25-foot requirement. You can see that the encroachment on the rear left corner of the building in terms of existing and proposed second floor is de minimis in nature. The neighbor to the left of my client's property, it seems that he meets his eight-foot setback. So I can say probably that the distance from that corner of my client's building to that of my neighbor, of the adjacent neighbor, is about 13, 13 feet and change. I, you know, in terms of the kitchen addition, I had to line up the left, the left wall of the kitchen with, you know, of my expansion with that of the existing kitchen. So given the location of the kitchen wall where it is and the continuation of that wall for the alignment of cabinets, et cetera, we are also encroaching a little bit in there, which I forgot to highlight, but we have a side yard setback of 6.5 feet. So no matter where I try to work on this house, we have all these obstacles. But primarily, my, the homeowner is seeking to go from three bedrooms, from three existing bedrooms to four. He wanted to shift the location of the stairs that, that basically you use to get around the entire house. We shifted that and in doing so, we pretty much, we pretty much lost that, one of the front-facing bedrooms. And we converted that into work-from-home office. Everyone here is pretty much a professional. These guys are not married. They're probably gonna be with their parents for a little bit. And so there is no areas for them to do work. Most of them, you know, work from home and need the, need the room, need the space. As far as the size of the house, the house is 44 foot wide by approximately 24 feet in depth. It's not a big footprint. It's only 1,056 square feet. And that's basically the entire first floor. And now, right below the first floor is the den, the area, the floor where the den is adjacent to the garage. That den is only 282 square feet. So the total existing square footage of the house is 1,056 square feet plus 282. I think that's a little bit over 1,300 square feet. We are seeking to add, I think, a total of 800 square feet more, 800 plus square feet more, for a total of 2,413. Most of the, most of the added square footage is on the second floor, where we're proposing a second floor addition of 538 square feet. So we have a net gain of one bedroom with regards to the entire addition, because we lost one, but we're creating two on the second floor. And on the second floor, we're seeking to have almost two equivalent-sized bedrooms with a, with a hallway-accessible bathroom. As far as the bathroom that's on the current sleeping level, we, like I said, we are expanding that and creating a nice, large bathroom for everyone to use. I think that for the most part, we did all that we could in avoiding variances, you know. I don't think I have anything else to say. I mean, I could go long here. I wrote like a long speech, but I think.
You've been in front of this board before, right?
Yes, I have. Some years ago.
Yes. No, you're.
And I think I'm open to any.
You're very clear with your testimony.
Thank you. Thank you. So if, I think, can you pull up the floor plans? I just wanna show real quick. Okay, so I just wanna give you a quick tour through the floors of the house. I wanna focus on this. So the plan that you're seeing on your screen is basically the grade level plan. As you know, with a split-level home, half of the, half of the house would have like a slab-on-grade type of foundation. And at ground level, we have an existing den. The den is being expanded by removing the garage, aligning the concrete floors, putting a nice vinyl-finished flooring there. So we're doubling the size of the existing den. We do have two parking spaces. I have pictures to show, two cars parked on the driveway, you know, that, where we can clearly show that you can park two cars. You know, when it comes to the question about do we, have we provided enough parking? The requirement, I think, was two, and we're providing two. The basement is, it's an unfinished basement, which is the left half portion of the house. And the basement is basically comprised of like a laundry room and the utilities, like the A-trac water heater. And there's nothing more to be done there other than the, other than the the increase in the den by removing the garage. On this plan, you can see that I have a secondary door, that front-facing door with a window next to that. It has been suggested by LRK Engineering that, you know, maybe we wanna relocate that door so that there are no, so that there are no two doors, you know, facing the front. We're willing to do that and we will do that and we'll place the door on the right, on the right wall, on the right side wall of the, of the house. Sorry, I hate laptops. Now I'm showing you here the existing first, the proposed first-floor plan. Basically, you could see from the rear-left corner where the, where the original house was and where the extensions, where the expansions are. The expansions are shown by the hatched wall areas. And you could see the expanded bedroom, which by the way, it's not a large bedroom. I think now it's a 14-by-16 master bedroom. The bathroom is a very nice and comfortable bathroom with a double, a double sink, a toilet and a shower. And most importantly, the kitchen, just by going out six feet by whatever that width is, I think it's 12 feet, it does a great deal for them. Because now, you know, they have a place to put the table. We can open up the existing dining room to where the former kitchen used to be. And now they have a modern, open concept on the, just on the, on the, I guess, livable or living area of the house, which is just that, that part of the house. Everything else is just hallways and bedrooms, the four bedrooms. To the left, to the left is the proposed second floor. So you can see it's almost like a perfect rectangle. I have two bedrooms. One of the requirements was that both bedrooms had to be equal in size. We did the best that we could there. And a rear, a rear-facing bathroom. The bathroom faces the back because there's plumbing underneath, so it makes sense to try to keep the plumbing together for cost-effectiveness. Can you take me to the elevations? We'll discuss that later. So show me the whole page, please. Zoom out here. So here you can see the proposed, the proposed exterior views. Now with the added second floor, with the added rear addition. My client didn't really need more space below the master suite and hallway bathroom addition. So what we did was we supported that addition with beams and columns. That's what you basically see on the drawing at the top-left corner. The drawing on the top-right side is basically the, the left-side view. This is if you're standing on Miller Drive, looking at the, at the house. On the bottom-left corner, you would find the right-side elevation. I highlighted basically where that door would be, that front-proposed. front proposed, originally proposed front door, where that would be relocated on the side view. I kept it a few feet away because I believed that the electrical meter is right on that corner to the left of where I'm proposing the door now. And so we appreciate the advice there. I think it does make sense. And what I'm doing now with the front elevation, which is the bottom-right corner drawing, is we're going to mimic the two windows that are on the second floor down onto the first floor. So basically, you have four windows on the, on the upper level, on the sleeping room level, and four windows on the den-family room area. We, I think on one of the slides, I'm showing the location of the condensers, AC condensers. That was one of the questions that was brought up on the report. Go to the top. If it's on the foundation plan. Up, right there. Okay, right there. So I inked in basically the location of where one of the existing condensers are. That condenser is basically serving or servicing the, the entire first floor. We're, we have to add a second condenser because with the second-floor addition, the intention is to place the H-trac unit up in the, on the brand-new attic, on the unfinished attic. So for every H-trac unit, you need a condenser. And so we put the, the second condenser addition to the exist, to the existing one. That area is kind of buffered by bushes and little bushes and trees, right? So that's basically the, the separation that he has from the left-side neighbor on Miller Drive. I think there was a comment on the covered front porch, and that comment was to basically, can we have a column in the center? I think what we want to do is, we're going to keep the corner columns, but we're going to take that column immediately to the left of the edge of the, left edge of the stairs. We're going to center it. I don't think we want to do four, four columns. So we're going to continue to do three, but we're going to center the one in the, in the middle right now. I think I'm open for any comments if I didn't address anything.
Anything else in your letter?
Excuse me. Yes.
Is there anything else not addressed by the architect?
I think there was some landscape.
Let's go through the report real quick.
Okay.
So thank you for the color-coded diagram. It helps. Can you just go back to that?
Sure.
Page briefly. I recall seeing a larger green triangle fronting Turner Court on the right side. Your, your proposed scope of work will not be affecting that area, correct?
Correct.
But the triangle at the top, it's just the, I guess, it's the first floor. It's really a split level, so it's really the half-level.
They are, there is a large triangle at the top, at the top of the drawing. The left portion of that triangle represents the, the new addition, and the sort of smaller triangle there represents existing conditions, pre-existing, non-conforming. That's where the 16-point something feet.
Yeah.
Rear yard exists.
And then there's, I would say, two really, really tiny triangles on the left side. One in the middle for the kitchen. That's the 6.5-foot setback.
Very small, yes.
That's probably only a couple of square feet at best.
I agree with you.
Okay. And then the same would be for the area, that's the boxed area in yellow, which is really the full second-story addition for the two bedrooms for the children. They're not children anymore, I guess. They are also, that's 5.5 square feet. This is actually a condition where, if recall, the ordinance has a provision, if it's non-conforming side-yard setbacks, you may extend it as long as it's at least 50% of the eight. This would count as, oh, you don't need a variance for that, except for corner lots. But as of, I believe, tomorrow, when the publication of the ordinance goes into place, that corner lots being stricken from the ordinance, they would not need a variance for that.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. I think the publication issue is Friday. So I can make an argument, you don't need a variance for that if it was filed Monday. So I think, I think it's pretty clear, the additions encroaching into the sideyard setbacks that need variances, it's very, very small. I do have a question about the front of the house. Can you go to the front elevation? Actually, can you stay there? I noticed on the second floor, there is a. Yeah, go to, I think, page three.
Page 83.
That one. So I think, I believe it's the second-floor plan. On the front of the house, on the left side, there's this little tiny notch.
Yes.
And then can you go to the elevation? Which I believe it's going to be the last sheet. So can I see the front elevations? It'll be the lower-right side. So I see part of the house comes forward with that little notch. Based on looking at the survey, I assume you're doing that to try to avoid the front yard setback?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because I knew that the, the covered porch was, was okay. We are allowed to encroach up to eight foot into the front yard.
Correct.
Setback, but the only thing that would create another variance for us that we didn't want was squaring off that corner.
Right.
However, I mean, architecturally speaking, would make sense that you have a nice, sharp corner there, and that we didn't have to notch that side. So I don't know if the board is willing. I know we didn't apply for a front yard setback variance, but, I mean.
Well, I would say to that point, my, I was actually going to lead to that and say, my recommendation would be to square off the house and extend the porch so it's square with the addition.
That would be ideal, if we had, yes.
So what would the front yard setback, what would the variance be?
So if we did that.
Less than 25 feet, obviously.
We're at, we would be, we would be encroaching less than a foot into the front yard setback.
Okay, so this would be another tiny green triangle.
Thank you for raising that, Chris. I mean, the, I, I appreciate your attempt to avoid it, but, and this is a case where it would make for a better house and a better condition. So I, I think it's, it's correct to add that request.
I agree. That's my recommendation. If that's what the applicant wants to do.
Yeah.
When, when you move that door around to the corner, is it just going to be the one window, or are you doubling up the window?
We will have two windows. Basically, we'll have a total of eight windows, everything looking symmetrical.
Okay, yeah, sorry. I walked in a little late.
Not a problem.
Yeah. And you mentioned you may not be able to move it just around the corner because of the meter.
Yeah.
You, you may want to.
It would be ideal to move that door closer to the corner, but we have the electrical meter there.
I, I, just as a, you know, taking my chair hat off, just saying, as an architect, you may want to work with them to look at furniture placement to figure out. It may want to shift even more towards the back.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean?
We, we have no problem there.
Yeah. You might, you might be able to.
It's cheaper to move the door. It's much cheaper to move the door. Yeah, I don't know if there were, if there were any questions regarding landscaping. We are willing to comply with everything that's on the report regarding waivers on planting or additional planting. I think, I think there was a, a comment regarding adding shrubs along the front porch.
Yeah, so a comment 7.4 to address Mr. Johnson's comment that, that will need a variance if you don't have it. So my recommendation is, don't request that variance, or eliminate the variance request, and just put the additional shrubs in there. As far as the trees, given that the, what we're calling street trees, because the, the, where, where they are located on the property mean not between a sidewalk and a curb, they're at, basically behind the curb, or generally on the property line. Because of that condition, there really is no room for front yard shade trees. So my recommendation would be to put one more street tree on Miller with the species in consultation with the Shade Tree Commission.
Yes.
Add another flowering tree, but I would recommend variances be granted for the front yard shade tree requirement because the street trees sort of do that for the applicant.
Yes, we're willing to comply with that.
Yeah, that seems reasonable. And you also noted about adding additional species, that they would, they would work with your office for?
Yes, in consultation with the Shade Tree Commission. Trying to involve them more into the process for even homeowner applications.
Okay.
The last comment is, just, there's no requirement, but just practically speaking, where are your solid waste and recycling containers going to be located?
It's on the left side.
Left or right side?
I have pictures of your property. You want to go into them real quick?
I guess I would expect it to be on the right side, near the driveway. Right side? Yeah, okay. If the, is there a paper pad for that?
Yeah, it's, it's roughly, almost, it will be kind of adjacent to where the new relocated front door would be, which would not be a side door.
That would be convenient. If it's visible from Turner Court, I may just suggest.
It's a good area because.
Another shrub or two.
The lot opens wider in that area with respect to the house, so.
Yeah.
Plenty of space there, too.
Yeah, if we, if we do, well, when I do my final inspections, if, if it's, the cans are visible, I may ask for another shrub or two.
Sure.
Yeah. And then the mechanical equipment, I think as long as it's at least three feet away from the property line. It looked like it was.
Yes, it will be.
And the plans we discussed. Actually, the only other comment was, I felt like the floating gable was a little odd. But now that you get to square off the house, you might be able to simplify the fenestration pattern.
Yeah, we're taking it out.
Okay. I have no other comments, other than just typical as-built. I think there's, there seemed to be some testimony on a C1 variance, the hardship criteria. If we can piece it together, I feel like we heard enough testimony, but I'll defer to counsel and the board members.
Yeah, I mean, I think the applicant kind of.
Yeah, I think you went through the positive criteria pretty well, and I think you alluded to it, but if you want to just go through the negative criteria again, just, is there any detriment?
You know, I don't know if there is any negative criteria based on what the current house looks like today versus what is being proposed. The only negative criteria is that maybe his home is, again, a little closer to the neighbor on the left. However, his neighbor's very nice, has good relationship with my client, and he's okay. And he's actually, you know, looking forward to seeing the addition happen.
So do you believe it'll have substantial detriment to the public good?
I don't think, no.
And do you think it'll substantially impair the intent of the ordinance in a master plan?
It will not impair it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
I just wanted to ask for clarification. Plans are funky when they're split levels, you know, when we're looking at it. So where the garage, is the garage still even there? Because I, you know, I seen the proposal.
So the garage door used to be where, on the elevator, on the front elevation view, where I proposed that one door.
Yeah, I got that. But what is there now? Is it still used as a garage, or it's converted already?
Are you using your garage as garage?
Not as a garage.
A storage?
Okay.
To that point, can you confirm that you can fit two cars without encroaching on the sidewalk?
Yes.
And that meets RSIS?
And he did, he did mention that already.
Yeah, I thought you were going to show pictures, but I'm willing to take his word for it.
Want to see a photo, or?
We should, just for complete testimony.
Yeah, why not?
Why not?
The one you sent me today.
So if you get F-150, then we have to think about something different.
No one can fit anything in those garages. Sorry. No cars go in those garages.
There it is.
There you go.
And you have a sidewalk around the entire property?
What was that?
There's an existing public sidewalk around the entire front.
Yes, all around the property.
All right. All right, nothing to do here on this one.
Everyone immediately looks.
Save this for an hour.
Yes. Any other questions from the board? Seeing no additional questions from the board, it is customary that we have to open up to the public if there are any questions or comments on this matter. Seeing none, we can close the public portion. If I don't do that, I get in trouble. Okay, I think it was a good case. I'd like to compliment the architect. I happen to have grown up in a version of this house in a different town, and I never would have thought to put an addition on the way you have. So I think you were very sensitive both to the site conditions as well as the existing fabric. And in general, I think, you know, it's a, it's a wonderful neighborhood back there. There are some strange lots, and I think the improvements you're making far outweigh putting roadblocks in front of, you know, town citizens that just want to make improvements to their real estate. So I think in, in general, you hired a good architect. You must have worked very thoughtfully with them, and I, it looks to me like it'll serve your family quite well. So I, I think you've done a good job presenting it as well. I heard some conditions. I heard testimony about the hardship criteria. I think we've had, heard enough. The condition, there's no special conditions on this, other than we would work with the planner's report to further satisfy going forward. Someone like to make a motion on this?
Motion to approve?
Ms. Delgada?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ravinewitz?
The long is Mr. Topping's okay with the vote?
He, he missed the first witness, but I think he's heard enough.
Okay.
I did review the.
And he, and he reviewed.
Fire, so, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Sealsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sondergaard?
Yes.
Mr. Tovin?
Yes.
Mr. Topping?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes new business. Motion to close the public portion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And correspondence, what do we have? Just minutes from the August meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess would someone who was at that meeting make a motion?
Motion to approve minutes?
Are we at all ayes?
Oh.
Aye.
Can we?
Yes.
Oh, for minutes? Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, sure. Aye. Done. And with that being said, I will make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye. Beautiful application.
Top me out at 45 minutes, which is.
I have a split level.